Select Board meeting, Tuesday, September 15th, 2020. Josh Chakotini, Chair. We have Mary Ashcroft and Sharon Russell. And I'm sure we'll have one or two other members here join momentarily. A lot of people on tonight. We appreciate you joining. I'd imagine many of you are here tonight to witness the unboxing of the fire engine proposals and bids. And so, we're going to get to that in a moment. But to start the meeting off, I would like to go to the approval of several sets of minutes for the Select Board. We have August 18th, September 1st, September 4th, and September 8th, believe it or not, to approve. And then Carrie and Susan are working diligently on the orders. And they were just waiting on a couple last minute things, so the orders will be done tomorrow at some point for all of us to sign. The payroll portion's done, but if you come in tomorrow, you can sign away on everything. So appreciate your hard work on that, Carrie and Susan. I got with me in Town Hall tonight, Bill Sweet and Fire Chief Clark. And Carrie Clark is in the house as well. And Joe DiNardo, I see you got on. Can you hear us, Joe?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, very good. So we have four sets of minutes to approve. The first is for August 18th. And I was absent, but it says Mary, Sharon, Joe, and John Paul were all there of the three of my colleagues on to... Anyone want to make calls on these?
I'll move. We approve the minutes of August 18th.
Motion by Mary. Is there a second? By Joe DiNardo for discussion. Were there any corrections, deletions, or additions?
I can't vote on it. I did not get the thing from Kevin Lozo in regards to taxes.
Yeah, does this have to do with...
The abatement of taxes.
That's a different meeting. This is August 18th. This is a Select Board meeting, Sharon.
That's what I'm looking for. Yeah, Select Board meeting, open meeting, I'll be a conference call, August 18th, 2020. Kevin Lozo, Director of the Housing Authority, addressed the board regarding a tax abatement request he submitted for 101 Route 4 East.
So at last week's BCA meeting, he withdrew his tax abatement request. They're no longer seeking a tax adjustment.
So are we going to delete that section then?
No, because that was part, that was, at the time, that was the most current information that we had. This is just reporting the news of what took place at that meeting. Since then, things have changed.
Sharon, you were at the 18th meeting. Your name's listed here.
You're darn right I was, Joey. And I also know that I did not see the thing from Kevin Lozo.
Right, but we also didn't, we also didn't take any action at that meeting on it besides these are just the minutes of what did happen.
Yeah, this is just what went on in the meeting.
Okay, but what I'm saying to you, I didn't, for me to say okay on that, I didn't receive a copy of his request. So I'm not sure that I, I think I should abstain.
No, no Sharon, this just means that you were at the meeting and you participated in the meeting on the 18th. It doesn't, other than that, it doesn't mean anything. I didn't see the letter either, but I'm not abstaining because I was at the meeting and I listened to all of the rigmarole that went on that night.
Well, I don't remember him asking about an abatement of taxes.
Yeah, he did. That's why we, they, that was one of the questions that they did ask. I do remember that.
All right.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of these minutes say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, so John Paul, you joined as well, thank you. And so I heard John Paul say aye, Joe said aye, Mary said aye. I wasn't at this meeting, so I'm abstaining. At least three ayes. So the 18th minutes will be at, in with Billy or Carrie, and you can sign at your convenience. Let's move on to the September 1st minutes. Present at this meeting was Mary Ashcroft, Sharon Russell, and John Paul Fagin. This was the night that our baby was born, so I missed this one. Is there...
Two weeks ago.
What's that?
I said two weeks ago. You got any sleep yet?
Yeah, I'm doing all right.
I move to accept the minutes of the September 1st meeting.
Mary made the motion. Is there a second? Second by Sharon for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'll abstain.
I'm abstaining. Sharon, is that an aye?
Yes, it was.
Okay, I didn't hear you. All right, so those minutes passed. They'll be waiting for three signatures. September 4th of 2020, it was myself, Mary, Sharon, John Paul, and Joe. It was a full house. This was the site that, on Route 4. Is there a motion to approve these minutes as presented?
Move, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John, or by Joe for discussion. All those in favor of these minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Josh?
Yeah, Joe?
I would request that these minutes be part of the official packet or information that's collected on that Housing Authority project because there's a lot of statements in here made by Mr. Lozo that there was at least a dozen people there that witnessed, and these are how we'll hold their toes to the fire.
Very good. I would agree, and we'll have Bill please attach this to the Act 50 information to send off.
Thank you.
All right, Joe. And the September 8th minutes, this was at the Centar Island Fire Station. This was myself, Joe, and Mary. This was a meeting after the BCA meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second by Mary for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, so there's three there. Okay, so the minutes are complete. Is there anyone who's not on the agenda who wishes to attend tonight, other than to discuss the fire, fire engine bids? Okay. Before we start with the fire truck bids, Bill Sweet has written a beautiful proclamation on behalf of the board and the town that I'd like to read for us to attend to tonight if the board still chooses. This is a proclamation by the Town of Brooklyn, Vermont, recognizing Thomas Dairy. It says, "Whereas Thomas Dairy has been in operation for 99 years, whereas Thomas Dairy rebuilt and improved operations after a fire in 1955, whereas Thomas Dairy rebuilt and improved operations after a fire in 1960, whereas Thomas Dairy received a Vermont Seal of Quality in 1970, and whereas Thomas Dairy is one of Vermont's most historic family farms, supplying fresh milk to generations of Vermonters, and whereas Thomas Dairy can be a partner to elementary and high schools around our region, and whereas Thomas Dairy has partnered with many community, communities and organizations providing service and donations to countless residents, and whereas Thomas Dairy will cease its operation September 30th of 2020. Now therefore, the Town of Brooklyn Select Board do hereby proclaim and announce their gratitude and thanks for the dedication to the community they serve by the family and employees of Thomas Dairy from 1921 to 2015 on this 15th day of September." And it has our five names at the bottom. Upon me reading of this, would a motion be in order to approve and sign to send off to the Thomas family?
Second.
Who made the motion, please? I heard a couple seconds. I didn't hear who made the motion.
Sounds like JCP.
Okay, John Paul, motion, and I heard a second by, was it Mary?
Yeah.
Second by Mary for discussing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5 to 0. It'll be here, awaiting your signature, and thank you, Bill Sweet, for the beautiful words you put together for the Thomas Dairy family. At this time, we have received five bids for the fire truck replacement, and they have come in boxes and packages and so on. The way that we warn this would be that we would open them at the Select Board meeting. What I'd like to do tonight, if the board approves, because it's a lot of information, I would like to open them in front of all of us, read the names of the five vendors who have submitted, give them to Bill Sweet and Chris Clark to go through and get us the pricing. Because if I try or attempt to do the pricing, we are going to be sitting here for a long time as I try to fumble through these pages this whole thing. Does the board agree with my proposal?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll grab the first box here. Here it is. This one is from DeSorcy. Here's the first one from DeSorcy, and turning it over to Bill Sweet. Number two here.
They didn't vote it. Josh, sorry, I didn't hear who that was from.
The second one, Mary, or the first?
Second.
The second one is from a company called Lakes Region. Little beat up here, this box. This one is from, what's that?
That is Rosenbauer.
This is from a company called Rosenbauer. This is from, is it called Bulldog?
Yes.
Here's the bid from Bulldog. And finally, we have a company called Shakerly. Here's that one. So Bill and Chris are here working on Joe and Sharon's desks. Oh, they said they'll have it to us here momentarily, so if I can get that from them, we do have, do we have representatives from all five companies on? Bill? We believe so. Okay, so Bill, that's, wow, that's quick work, though. Bill was able to get us the pricing, and Chris, thank you. Here it is, folks. I'm going to read it off. I'll go slow. Specialty Vehicles, Inc., also known as Rosenbauer. The number is $743,917. Mary, Mary, did you get that?
I did.
Okay. The next one is, that Bill wrote out, is Shakerly. That number is $674,567. The third one is DeSorcy. The fourth one is Bulldog. And finally, Lakes Region. Would anyone like me to repeat those numbers? At this time, it'd be customary for the board to make a motion to send these bids to the Fire Chief for him and his committee to review and discuss, and then report back to us their findings to see if the bid specs meet what the Town of Brooklyn has asked for.
I would so move.
Motion by Mary. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that, Bill. Josh?
Second by Joe DiNardo for discussion.
So we're sending this to the Fire Committee or, in the Fire Committee and the Truck Committee with the chief? That's, is that the customary, I think that's the customary process, isn't it?
I think it starts at the Truck Committee first, Joe, and then the Fire Committee would be involved thereon, and then the full board.
Okay. Well, I was just trying to save a step, but they could all get together and discuss them, and then come up with their recommendation.
The chief is telling me here that they're meeting at Friday, this Friday, at 6:00 PM. Where's that? Center Island? So the Fire Committee, or the Fire Truck Replacement Committee, made up of firefighters, is meeting at 6:00 PM this Friday at the Centar Island Station, and according to the chief, all are welcome, correct? Yeah. So does that answer your question, Joe?
It does.
Okay. Any further discussion before we vote on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So you folks will take a look at those. To the, to the folks on the phone from these different companies, thanks for being here. We appreciate your work on this, and we look forward to getting back to you. Let's go to Bill Sweet, County Administrator, Select Board.
Good evening. We have a few things to go through in the packet. First is the meeting capital and committee agenda items is number one. There was a additional meeting scheduled today, which was sent out. The Police Committee is meeting Friday morning at 9:00 AM at Town Hall. Anybody coming needs to wear a face covering. There will be a conference call number available if anybody wants to call in also. So that's updated on the schedule. Number two is covered under New Business. Number three is from the Planning Commission. If Barbara doesn't make it on, I have a short report for her we can do later. Nope, that's, that's number two. That's for New Business. Letter D is for Andy McCain, and he is on the call. Number four is correspondence received from a resident on Post Road. That's to the board. Everybody got a copy of that. And number five is a copy of their report from the speed cart for that section of road. And number six is for Old Business, letter A, followed from the last meeting for a full discussion from the board. And I sent out just a couple things in email this afternoon, supplements from Byron with some information, and then the copy of the proclamation so everybody could see that. So that is everything I have right now.
Okay, so one, we know is just an update. Did you say four we sent to the Police Department?
Four, wasn't it four?
Yeah, I know that.
We haven't yet, Josh, but I believe the meeting on Friday is warned to include a discussion of Post Road speeding.
Okay.
So I would move we send it to the Police Committee.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Sharon for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that'll be at the Police Commission, Police Committee meeting on Friday. Number five has to do with that as well, right? All right, so five will be for that. And I'm sorry, Bill, I was trying to catch up here. Number six you said was...
Was from the last meeting. It's Old Business, letter A. It's about a scholarship payment request, and it was requested to go over to this agenda to be discussed with the full board.
Mary and Sharon, you guys sit on the scholarship committee. Do you want to report on this?
Do you want to take it up now?
We can, if we're here.
All right, well, this is a request to pay basically out of time, the second part of a scholarship that was awarded in 2019.
It is out of time because the request was made for not the second half of the first year, but the, the, the request was delayed because the young man did not return to his school the second half, and instead started in a different school and registered for the fall, which would be this year. One of the difficulties is because of our policy and what the voters have instructed us to do, when we close out the fiscal year, any money remaining gets swept into our capital funds, so there isn't any money earmarked to pay the $250 requested. And we, so it's kind of up to the board to decide if we pay it and what pot of money we take it from. The scholarship money for this year is all earmarked for the students who graduated in the spring of 2020, so we can't use that.
Carrie, how much is it that...
It's $250.
After hearing what Mary had to say, what's the worst pleasure in this?
Doesn't sound like there's anything we can do.
Okay. Does someone like to make that a motion to more than inform?
Josh, do we have any contingency money or money that's put in our budget for things that pop up?
We have, I would...
I would think the first thing would be the miscellaneous, you know, a couple thousand dollars and...
We use, I think, that money for flowers and things like that, you know, babies.
Any, I mean, I don't know, it just seems a shame there was some real complicating factors there that maybe we could figure out a way to come up with that, but that was just my thought. You know, sometimes we just have some money that, you know, in a budget that's just for emergencies or unexpected.
I'm sure we can find somewhere $250. That was the worst pleasure. Well, at this time, it doesn't sound like there's any motion either direction, so I guess it would be a funded request. Okay, we're going to move on to... Hey, Mr. Bill? Where's the... All right, Bill, good. Colleagues, is there anything for Bill? Okay. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer, anything for the board?
I don't have anything for the board tonight.
Anything for Carrie from my colleagues? All right, thanks, Karen. Barbara Pulling is absent tonight. Bill says that he has a quick report for the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so she, Barbara just asked me to pass along a couple things that are coming up for the Planning Commission. There is a backline adjustment for them to review on Thursday, as well as a subdivision request on the corner of Post Road, Post Road Extension to be considered. They're also meeting with the developers who are looking to install a solar array adjacent to Route 7 North. They're going to be meeting with the commission on Thursday night, and going to be moving forward with the municipal planning grant for the Pocket Park. We've got that set up with the state, and she's going to be working on the application to move that forward. So that's what is on their agenda right now.
Okay. Anything for Bill in regards to Planning Commission?
Yeah, this is Mary. Just on the Pocket Park, just, I think this has to be submitted probably October 1st, which I think is just before our next meeting.
Just after.
Just after, okay. So I would, you know, just to, I would like to have the board submit a, on behalf of the town, a letter of support for the grant application. I will say that I reached out to Green Mountain Power, our partners in this project, and we have an email from them expressing their support and willingness to co-sign with us on this, if that's the appropriate word, to co-apply with us for this planning grant. Briefly, we would use the planning grant funds to possibly survey the area because we will need to do memorandum of understanding between us and Green Mountain Power. We will need to draft some easements between us. The planning grant will be used to identify permits and restrictions such as tree cutting and that sort of thing. And we were hoping to get money to also do an engineering as needed for the path down to the water's edge for canoe and kayak access, and also some ideas on storyboards and signage for the place. So I would move that the town support this project and be prepared to send a letter of support in for the planning grant.
Second.
Motion by Mary. I heard two seconds, one by Sharon, one by John Paul. Further discussion? I think this is an exceptional project for Centar Island, and I, I find it, so we've been talking about it for a long time, and I think it's exciting to see that we're moving forward. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks for that, Mary.
Thank you.
Mike, how are you tonight?
I'm good. How are you? Congratulations on your newborn.
Thank you.
Just a couple things I have. The pool is all buttoned up. The water's not shut off, but the cover's on, and everything is closed up there, so I keep checking on that a couple of days. that a couple of days, keep an eye on it. We are starting, we started a couple weeks ago, our soccer practice. I'm awaiting if the governor will allow us to go to step three, which would allow our teams to start participating in games. I'm at practices, taking temperatures, um, before, for the kids that arrive, going very smoothly. I'm very happy with our volunteers, and the kids are just really happy to be back out there wearing a mask constantly when they are participating. Other than that, I guess I'd probably get a committee meeting at some point to determine the Halloween, which, yes, October's less than two weeks away, what we're gonna do, and if, if we're gonna do anything with Halloween party that we normally have. So I can get together with my committee members and, and figure out what might happen.
Okay.
Pretty much all.
Anybody have anything for Mike Rowe? Alright, Mike, thanks. Byron Hathaway, town road commissioner.
Uh, just a couple of things, I had Bill put in your packet, um, information in regards to that highway stormwater mitigation grant opportunity. I have written, um, the grant for Salt Ted, and would like to write another grant for that same thing, um, for a, for the Culver project on Town Line Road. I just need board's permission to go ahead and submit the, the two applications. And we'll proceed to get our support from the RPC for each one of those.
Yeah, I think it's important that we do it. They're, they're good quality projects. Any thoughts from my colleagues?
No, I, I move we authorize Byron to move forward with both applications.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
Check it.
Second by Sharon. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hi, Byron.
Um, I will have some information for you in regards to the shared use path in your package for next time. I really want to get here tonight to discuss that, just to focus on water treatment. So I'll wait till next time, there's no hurry on, on that particular project at this point.
That's all I have.
A week for the home snowplows out, getting that stuff ready. We're tidying up a couple of last-minute small construction projects before the excavator goes back at, at the end of its, uh, rent period, and, uh, we're in good shape at this point.
Excellent. Anything for Byron?
Uh, yeah, where are we on Ranbury Road? Did you talk to Bob Clark?
Ranbury Road? Oh, it's, uh, I thought, I thought the, uh, we're starting here toward the end of September, and I haven't heard anything more. I don't know exactly where Masterson is, their intention was to have that project completed before, uh, within.
Yeah, could we, could we find out, because there was a question about the, whether paving was going to have to be postponed because of the winter until next spring, so it'd be good to know where, because I drove by it today and nothing was going on, so.
I'll call Robert first thing in the morning, and, uh, hopefully maybe have some information for the, the town of Long Island.
Okay, thank you, Byron.
Thanks for everything, Byron. Anything from our fire chief tonight, Chris Clark?
Only one thing, our new extrication tools were ordered, and they'll be here a week from Friday.
And those, those on what?
Uh, engine three.
Excellent.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Chris. Anything for the fire chief?
Christopher, I have one question for you.
What's that?
Did these companies that bid on the truck know you were between a rock and a hard place?
Uh, they do, yes.
Yeah, because the prices really reflect that. In my opinion.
We got a cut, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, in my, in my opinion, they really, they really, uh, the, the lowest price is a hundred grand more than what the town paid for the new engine one. And I just, um, anyway, it's staggering from, and they're double, those prices are double what we paid for, uh, engine four in Center Outland in 2013. So just, that just gives you guys on the board and whoever else is listening a perspective of the cost of this stuff and, and the absurdity of these prices. It's, it's just staggering. But you guys did a good job getting that done in a hurry, and, and I hope we can make it work, and good luck.
Thank you.
Fire chief, thanks. Uh, it's you, it's town fire chief, uh, town, you're the town police chief.
Yes, I am.
He doesn't need another promotion.
Go ahead, sir.
All I have is thirty calls for service. The reason it being so low this week was, uh, Officer Hoolz back in school, starting nine and three, we had training, head at training, uh, eight thirty, nine four. Gamble's on the case from eight thirty-five, and I am Officer Hoolz, first and first. So that's why we have to lower all volume at this point in time. The other stuff I have will be the great, the police commission meeting on Friday.
Very good. Anything for the police chief?
Ed, um, did, did I understand that the, one of the topics for your meeting Friday morning is this, uh, so repeated letters from post-road?
Yes.
Okay, because I would just, this is the first time I've been made aware of this gentleman writing to you guys and trying to get the speed down up there, so, um, it goes back quite a ways. It, it, it just kind of, I don't know, I can, I can read his frustration into his meet, into his, uh, letter, so hopefully you guys could come up with a good plan to, uh, relieve some of the problems up there.
Yes.
The problems up there are perception, because the house sits lower than the road, the vehicles appear to be traveling faster than they are.
Okay. Have you spent, I, I would assume JP, you spent some time probably in this guy's driveway?
In, uh, two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, I did traffic surveys, and they aren't that much different than the speed cart survey that was recently completed, I don't know, eight years later.
Yeah, thank God.
So, so we're gonna have, we're gonna ask the chief and Ted to walk us through the results of the speed cart survey, um, and see if we, if that does address some of, um, what the gentleman is raising. But the data, if I read it, appears to say it's not anywhere near the frequency as the perception is, so JP's right, as far as I can tell.
Good.
Bill, could you make sure that shows up in the minutes that Mary said I was right?
Yeah, just on this very small, limited circumstance, yes.
I understand it's a discreet issue, but I'll take the victory nonetheless.
Lucky for Mary, Bill walked to the bathroom, didn't hear that. Alright, let's go to John Paul Fagan, town health officer, what do you got?
So I would just like to float an idea out to the board that, um, I think the next week or so is going to be really telling us to whether we can do all the things we're doing without paying too heavy of a price, and that we may want to consider, Josh, I know you're not in step with this at this time, but I think we should consider opening up the town office, um, you know, with all the restrictions in place. It's just something I want people to chew on for a week or so. We can, we can take it up at our next meeting, and if, if we continue, um, along the trend, which is we don't appear to be having any real serious outbreaks, then it may be something we should consider, and we could convince Josh that, if, if the rest of you agree.
So would you, would you mind telling the board where you actually got this idea from tonight?
Well, if you go to the Department of Health website, there are already discussions on this issue.
Yeah, I, uh, I love the idea, you know, I had a conversation with a couple of board members. Uh, you know, schools are back, back in session, the DMV is reopening, banks are, both banks are allowing you to walk in, and I think that, uh, that it's high time that we can do it safely, that the people of Rowland Town, you know, should be able to walk into their town hall that they so proudly support and pay for, and we want to keep all towns safe and do it in a manner that is acceptable to everyone, but I think it's time that we, we, uh, we do that, so.
Yeah, I believe that DM, DMV has been doing stuff by appointment, um, excuse me, we started that months ago, so I think we were ahead of the curve there. Um, the appointment thing for motor vehicles works really good, but, um, I think, I, I'm still a firm believer in, in JP, um, you know, if we, if we monitor what's going on for a couple more weeks, um, we, we, you know, now that things are opened up and, and we don't have any big, uh, increases in, in the number of cases, we might be safe. I'm just afraid that people are going to get lax, and right now it's still very top of their list of things that they don't like, so they're, they're paying attention to it, and I don't want that to go away.
No, I agree with that, Joe.
But you're the, you're the guy that's kind of keeping an eye on trends and cases and statistics, so, you know, we're gonna have to depend on what you bring to us to, to make our decisions.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it out there so people got time to think about it, and we can, uh, take it up again at our next meeting.
Yeah, Carrie, uh, Carrie, you still on, Carrie?
I'm still here.
Yeah, um, so you're still taking appointments and, and people are still getting the stuff they need done, done?
We are continuing as we have been in the past months. We still take appointments. Um, it's been working out really well. We've been able to get the residents and, um, other people that call and request things, uh, documents to them pretty quickly through the mail, through email. Um, we've been functioning very well. Um, I just, uh, would like to put this out there for discussion for next time, when we have a full discussion about this, um, that from our observations, uh, through the, the office, um, even though protocol is in effect as far as you must come to the town hall with a mask, or you called us, um, we, I'll put it this way, I think we need to remind people strongly that this is, um, still something that we need to do. Uh, many, many people still forget this. Um, they try to come through the door even though it's locked, and the, the sign is still there, and they are not wearing masks when we come to the door. So, um, just a thought for discussion for next time.
Um, are you getting any negative feedback, any complaints about the way we're doing that? I mean, are you hearing anything that, uh, I, I haven't heard anything, so I, I didn't know if you're aware of, uh, people complaining because we aren't just open to the general public and we are doing appointments still?
So here's my thought on that. I hear both sides, um, and I, I, I just disregard any opinion, really. Um, we're doing the business as we should. Um, there's a lot of people angry about that, but we are doing exactly what other town halls are doing around the state. Um, we've called, we've verified. Um, so when I hear negative comments, they roll off my shoulder because we're doing the best that we can, and we still are providing the best, um, customer service to our town residents, um, and we feel good about what we're doing.
Very good, thank you. Anything for Mary or Sharon on this topic?
No, I think we should start considering reopening, but I don't want to say it in front of JP, because that would mean I agree with him twice.
Thanks, Mary. Sharon, any thoughts?
What?
Any thoughts, Sharon?
Nope.
Alright, thanks. Committee meeting updates, anything to report? We had any committee meetings in the last two weeks? Nothing to report on. Update on our project list, nothing to report on, we're gonna find out about Ranbury Road from Byron. Check for the pocket park, this is on the board. Looks good. Uh, letter A, under new business, board to discuss our COVID plans, we talked about, uh, letter B, board to, uh, open bids, we just did. C, board to discuss budget process for the next fiscal year. I asked Bill to put this on, we are, you know, really only a meeting or two away from where we'd really start to hit budgets, uh, pretty hot and heavy at the committee level, uh, and then, uh, go to a full board. Uh, we have to obviously figure out what that looks like this year. Uh, department heads, if you know, as always, uh, sure you have plenty of ideas of what's your next budget you wish to have look like, but please put some thought to that if you haven't already. We should be, in my opinion, uh, with the timeline we're working on, start to schedule, uh, these committee meetings for early October, so we're prepared for full board meetings in November, um, regardless of that looks like Zoom or in person or whatever we decide, but, does that sound like a reasonable timeline to everybody?
Yes, it sounds, sounds good, Josh. I think, um, one of the things, I know there's some stuff we've been talking about in different, um, departments, and I hope that departments had remembered some of the special things we had talked about over the course of the year, and be prepared to include that in budgets, and, you know, make notes of anything that we might have missed last year, or upcoming events, or budgets that we need to be looking at.
Seems like every year we miss just one or two things, doesn't it, Bill, that we talked about, and we just, for whatever reason, it doesn't, you know, put it in?
Yeah, yeah, and we always forget to include it, you know, stuff that just comes up later, so. Somewhere along, I was hoping we maybe have made some notes, but nothing jumps right out at me right now.
Yeah. Okay. Also, on a side note, I forgot to mention, I, I had asked Bill to do, um, before winter to get the building pressure washed, and for $300, the building is gonna be pressure washed. What's that, Bill?
Yeah.
Oh, it's already done, I'm sorry, I didn't even notice. So the, the building has been pressure washed, it was, it was looking pretty, uh, crummy, uh, again, so that's done.
And you didn't notice?
I, you know, I, I came up the back door today, I'm sorry I didn't go up front. I didn't notice. Bill's giving me the, I misapprove.
Building maintenance, uh, things like, uh, getting furnaces serviced, you know, we're starting to get into the heating stuff. I think all this stuff usually just takes place, but just a reminder that, that stuff needs to be done and scheduled.
Bill's telling me that we're under contract for that, we've already taken care of it.
Okay.
So, and then Joe, at some point we gotta talk about the lobby here and the water fountain and stuff, so we'll schedule it.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to, you know, maybe include what, you know, we're starting into a new budget, um, and hopefully we have enough in there, we can take care of that. That's one of the things I think we put off last year.
Yeah.
When, when things got short, so that should be like, that should move to the top of the list now.
I agree. Alright, so let's go to, uh, letter D, board to discuss appoint, appointment requests from Fire District Five. So Andy McCain, this is you for tonight?
Yes, I am. Um, we've got a vacancy on our board. Um, right now, we can't, we can't hold an election because of COVID-19, uh, the way our bylaws are set up, and our bylaws allow for the selectmen to, uh, appoint a third member or a member, uh, to our prudential committee. And that's what we were asking you to do. I submitted, uh, our charter and our bylaws to, um, to, to Bill Sweet to give to John Paul, and I would assume he's reviewed them, and can.
So is there some reason why the prudential committee can't make, can't fill this vacancy?
We don't think we have the authority, to be honest with you, from. From.
So is the, your, your, your vacancy says that a vacancy in the prudential committee shall be filled at an annual or special meeting of the district.
Yes.
And then it goes on to say, it, it goes, no, it goes on to say, but the town selectmen may fill a vacancy in such committee by appointment of a district resident until such election is held.
Correct.
So how are you conduct, how are you conducting your meetings?
There, we still have two members of three, so we have a quorum. We haven't had a meeting yet since our vacancy occurred.
So couldn't you have a special meeting and have the uh, prudential committee uh, vote to who or however you're gonna have your people vote on who's gonna be the replacement? Uh, the only reason I'm asking Andy is because I'm not sure that this was supposed to be the selectmen that fill the vacancy. I think it should have been the prudential committee may fill a vacancy by appointment. Um, because once the select board approved the creation of the district, of the fire district, it really has nothing more to do with the fire district. The prudential committee's in charge, just like the board of selectmen are in charge of the town. And I'm, I'm concerned about mixing those two identities.
Yeah, I understand your, your uh, concern there, but the, the wording to me is pretty clear. I'm not being, not being a lawyer. However, it, it says specifically how we have to hold the election or it allows for the appointment and we just don't feel an election is, is at all feasible right now. Uh, we would have to have a, a hall large enough to hold roughly eighty people. Um, if you take the number of square footage that you need to maintain social distancing means we would need a hall in the, in the three thousand plus square footage range uh, to be able to do it safely.
You don't have the ability to use Zoom or anything like that?
It said, we went to the secretary of state. They said absolutely we cannot use Zoom. That we cannot hold an election um, via the internet.
Yeah.
Um, this is Mary. I, I read over what you submitted as well and I'm uncomfortable for the reasons JP expressed, but also first of all, it's the select board may, so we don't have to act and I'm not convinced that we need to. And secondly, I mean, the last time the select board really had anything to do with this was in nineteen ninety-six when the, the water, the district was set up. Um, and so I, I know nothing about it. I wouldn't know anything about the right person to sit on the prudential committee. So I would not feel comfortable attempting to fill a vacancy on um, a board that I know nothing about.
If you're not comfortable, we can, we, we're certainly able to operate the way we are right now without any problem. However, if we had another, another person leave, that would create a problem. But for right now, we're fine.
Who's in charge now Andy? You?
Yes, I'm vice, I was vice chair, so now I'm in charge. And Paula Townsend is the, the other prudential committee member.
Have, have things improved in the, in the fire district recently?
I would say yes. Um, we certainly, we polled uh, all our members of the district and we found that slightly over half of them who we, who we're able to um, talk to are perfectly comfortable with us not holding the election until next August. So uh, we're just gonna, for right now, while, certainly while COVID is here, we're just gonna operate the way that, that we are.
Uh, I have a question, Andy. Uh, this Joe Donato. Um, couldn't you uh, petition your members for candidates for this job? See who's interested and then uh, hold an election by mail and let the eighty or so folks that are part of the district know who the candidates are and they can cast a vote for each individual one. It'll take you maybe two or three weeks of mailing out and mailing back and uh, you could get this done by mail and, and it would be over and done within the next few weeks.
Unfortunately, our bylaws prevent an election by proxy. It's very specific. So that option was taken away from us also. Uh, so right now, we just.
Proxy's a little bit different than voting.
Yeah, yeah, voting is.
Proxy is when, no, no worries. Uh, proxy is if, Andy, is if, uh, if Joe and I were on, in the district and I say to Joe, you can have my vote, that's a proxy vote. I could understand why that would be prevented, but is a regular mail, uh, 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 otherwise would that vote be okay, do you think?
I really don't have any way to, to think that we could really do the work and, and schedule it out. So if you folks aren't comfortable with the appointment, that's, that's fine. We'll just, we'll just operate the way we are now. And uh,
All right.
And I don't anticipate really um, either myself or Paula Townsend uh, needing to leave in the near future. So uh, we should, we should be just fine.
Oh, good. Okay.
But I appreciate you taking in and looking at this for us. It was just another, you know, avenue that we could have gone down. And we would, we would like to have a third person. We had, we had three people volunteer. Um, all three of our fully qualified residents and, and uh, and any one of them would have been fine.
Okay, Andy, thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Go on.
Okay, to my colleagues, we've handled all new business and all old business discussed. Is there anything that we missed?
Um, this is Mary. I, I was reading through the minutes of our past meetings and we had talked about the circle, but I don't think we had reached any resolution and we got, it got passed, I think, to this meeting just to see where we are and what we wanna do.
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll own that, Mary. I had um, we had, I had asked Bill to put it on the last agenda. Um, the due date was September third, not September first, so I plan on being, talk about it. I had uh, back before COVID hit, we had uh, talked to Janelle Fagin uh, about uh, taking it over. Um, and then the pandemic and no school and so on, so we, we shelved the idea. Uh, I had talked to Janelle a few weeks ago to ask if she was still interested. She indicated that she was. And um, so I had put it on the agenda and then I had missed the meeting and we, I, from my understanding, there wasn't much discussion, so. Um, I think the point was all of us as board members feel that the circle is a important um, part of our community and we wanna see it continue. Uh, and um, I think that uh, I had a nice discussion with Janelle who's, you know, basically ready to go. Carol Bam, it sounds like will help her um, get through the first, a couple of additions. So um, I don't know what else, um, I don't remember what else I was gonna do, I guess, that night, but is that it Bill? So I, I guess uh, with everyone's blessing, we'll get this thing fired back up and, and go from there.
Sounds good.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay. Any further, the discussion on any topics tonight, folks? Motion would be in order to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by John. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Sharon? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, good night everyone. Take care.